Oh, there it goes. I was pushing the wrong button. Welcome to the City of Plymouth regular meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. We start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bottomley.
Here.
Councilmember Dell.
Here.
Councilmember Hornish.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nun.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Cranford.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get an approval of the city council regular meeting agenda? For November thirteenth? A motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda of November thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second the motion. Councilmember Bottomley.
I.
Councilmember Dell.
I.
Councilmember Hornish.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun.
Aye.
Mayor Cranford.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We'll now open the floor up to regular meeting public comment. This is for any public comment that is not on the agenda. So if you have something you want to share with the council, you have three minutes to do so. We ask that you just respect the three minute time slot after the beeper goes off. If you're going over that a little, we'll go ahead and give you a last warning and then ask you to to have a seat. Um, we have Patricia. I'm not gonna attempt the last name. I don't wanna mess that up.
Uh, it's Andija.
Thank you.
Um, so my name is Patricia Andija. I actually live in Ione, but I've been making my way around to different city councils. Um, and of course, the Board of Supervisors next week. Um, to talk on two topics, one of which is the consolidation for A C U S D. Um, as you probably know, they've restarted consolidation movements in twenty twenty two, and they've made very little progress to show for it. Um, since it's taken such a significant amount of time, three years, we're supposed to be consolidated right now, Ione Elementary in particular. Um, we aren't, and the horrible conditions that were written about in the ledger by then Principal Jenny DeWalt um, in twenty twenty two are still there. They're also going to persist for at least another three years. They're not gonna touch the schools. I can probably guarantee that. There's nothing in their consolidation plan to do that. I'm not sure of the state of Plymouth Elementary, but given the district's track record, I'm not thinking it's that much better. Um, so I'm just going around to all the cities to call on you guys to work in collaboration with the district. Um, Mr. Critchfield at last night's board meeting said that he's been in contact with various cities and county representatives. I haven't seen that. I've been to the Ione City Council meetings, of course. Um, I went to Sutter Creek um, the beginning of November. I went to Pioneer on Monday. Um, thus far, no one's really made mention that they've heard anything from the superintendent. I'm not sure if you guys have. But um, I'm hoping that there will be collaboration, that we can pull our limited resources together and do what's best for our kids. Um, so with that, that is that topic. Um, the next, and in my opinion, more important. Um, I am the treasurer for Amador's Heart of Gold. We are a newly formed nonprofit organization, and our purpose is to provide financial, emotional, and educational support to families affected by childhood cancer residing in Amador County. Um, in only the past two years, there have been six cases of childhood cancer diagnosed in Amador County. Compared to national rates, it is three times the national average. I went to the water board, or not the water board, the uh, Amador Water Agency meeting this morning. Um, I intend to go to the Regional Water Quality Control Board um, and any other boards that are um, related to public health um, to make a plea for them to investigate and then remediate anything. Um, especially since I highly suspected it has to do with our water, possibly wastewater treatment, and of course, our mining industries. Um, I am coming to different cities to let everyone know, every family know that we're here for all of Amador County. Um, we are, you know, constantly fundraising. We just started out in August, but um, if you are newly diagnosed and you don't know where to turn, um, two of our board members are moms who have kids with um, childhood cancer, and that's why they started it. We have a blood drive at Evelyn Bishop Hall on December eighth from noon to five thirty. If you want to follow us on Instagram, Facebook, Amador's Heart of Gold. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your community service. I know. I'm sorry, finishing a note. Anyone else? Stephanie, go ahead and come on up. Oh. That's okay. Go ahead. Stephanie, is that okay? If John goes, okay.
I didn't hear you.
I know you didn't hear me. I I know.
I'm sorry, I don't have my hearing aid on. Uh, wanted to ask a question here. Uh, who authorized? Did the city council authorize a commercial connection of the casinos to the uh, sea uh, water system? There is a hose, right now, three inch water hose is hooked to the city water hydrant that's furnishing water to that casino. Uh, I don't know how you stop that when they open, or whether it's temporary, or who authorized it, but that's something, it's a commercial hookup that should have gone through this council, it has not. Uh, and uh, they were supposed to have furnished a water plan to the county uh, within sixty days, and it's county signed into her agreement. Uh, that was nine months ago. And uh, they still have no water plan, and yet they hooked onto the city water, and I think you people need to do something about it. The other question is, are you gonna get paid? Um, the situation with the uh, I'd ask it, you look at the record of decision in regards to their reimbursement for the property tax and T O T tax that was was taken with the land when they took land in the trust. And I understand that the, that that is the a uh, true thing that they're supposed to be paying that, but the Department of Interior has decided not to enforce those. So it's money that's owed to the city, but the Department of Interior is not enforcing it. And evidently, there's an enforcement agency over that, so it's money, it's close to a million dollars of city improvements that's lost in T O T tax and property tax from uh, uh, they're taking of those properties. And uh, and it's, it's an ongoing thing every year, you know? You guys know the hit you're having on on T O T tax. So it's it's money they owe you, and uh, and and they aren't willing to pay it. Um, so it's it's uh, I I I, we need to get some answers, and and they, we get, we, they're talking about dealing in good faith. Uh, I don't believe that they're dealing in good faith when they owe these monies and aren't contacting us uh, in any way, just not paying them. So I think it's something you could need to look at. Uh, you want to negotiate in good faith, but uh, that's not what's happening in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Um.
Or water? Uh, but he was asking about the water. I can answer that real quick. John.
There's more information that came to light tonight. I don't know what you're gonna.
Oh, I was just gonna talk about the, that they have a permit for the water.
Yeah, um, but it's expired.
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay, John.
We're aware of that.
We're aware of that. Um, we're aware that they they do have a permit for the hydrant, and it has actually expired. So we're gonna be addressing that.
But it's not actually, it's the construction company.
Yeah, I know. The construction company had a had a permit that was given to this by the city. The council did not approve it. The permit has expired. It's being addressed.
That's Brian the Carthrow?
I I think, I believe so, yes. It's it's being addressed tomorrow. It's metered, yes. Um, okay, anyone else? Public comment? Yeah, go on then.
Stephanie Moreno, um, city resident, small business owner. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank um, the city attorney for taking care of getting the agendas and packets back on the homepage um, so quickly after it was brought to your attention. I would like to point out that the mobile website still hasn't been brought up compliant. It's a different thing they have to do, so I just wanted to point that out, but I really appreciate you um, taking care of that as quickly as you did. Um, secondly, I'm hoping that um, in light of the um, struggles that people are having, um, Plymouth has a high um, percentage of low income people. Um, the struggles that are people having with food and hunger and utility bills and everything else. Um, I'm hoping that the city, a lot of small cities, a lot of cities across the state are helping their citizens. Um, the smaller cities that don't have the financial resources such as Plymouth are are trying to leverage um, their partnerships with other nonprofits and organizations um, to to get those connections going for their citizens. And I'm hoping that we can put some of those resources on the webpage um, and social media. I think you had one. Excuse me, um, in October about signups here for the food bank, which was great, but we have Atka, and we have other organizations that maybe could come over and work with people, so hopefully you can invest some time in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any public comment that's not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Moody.
Robert Moody. So every morning, we walk around Plymouth and the path along the highway. So every morning, that Arbor Tree Company, they proceed to park in front of the electrical power plant over here.
P G and E.
You got two feet to walk around them and compete with the traffic. There's nothing marked. There's a little teeny yield sign, but that is our walking path, and I asked him yesterday, and he just, yeah, okay. And he just sat there, but they parked their trucks and everything when there's a parking lot right across the street.
Is this in front of P G and E?
This is that Arbor.
No, 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 they're parking in front of P G and E by the Eldorado Savings. Okay.
You know what I'm talking about? It stops right there at the
Okay.
Haunted House.
Yeah.
Or haunted. Nothing's labeled there that, and they're parking there, so.
Okay.
And then, second one, are we still on schedule for that flashing speed zone thing on that half of town?
That's a Cameron question.
Are you talking about along the the forty nine?
No, old sack.
Old sack.
Going out.
Yeah.
That was before Cameron was brought on, so that could have gotten lost in translation.
The the speed, flashing speed.
Yeah.
The uh, plan for that gonna be readjusted because the price of everything that was originally going to be ordered changed. It was gonna be purchased from Sierra for with fully made purchase funds that wouldn't put the city out of pocket. So that's what helped that up, but that is still in the works. That is not.
Yeah, cuz the sheriff sat down there a couple mornings, and I think he was eyeballing my neighbor and not the traffic that was speeding by him or the running of the stop signs.
Thank you.
Hey, Cannon, is that the that order we placed about two months ago? Okay, Mr. Moody, um, all tho- those projects have been, Lacey Canyon was right, there was some uh, price issues um, that have been adjusted. We're actually getting for a cheaper price now, but I was told six to eight months, and that was about a month and a half, two months ago. So i- it's coming. I apologize for the delay.
Anyone else for public comment? Of items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll go to the, anyone on the internets? Did we have any written? Public comment? Okay. I will close public comment at this time. Gonna move to uh, item four point one. Proclamation declaring November is National Indian Heritage Month. I'm gonna go ahead and read in the proclamation. I I don't have the skill set anymore at my age to memorize this, so I have to read it. Uh, proclamation declaring November is National American Indian Heritage Month, whereas November is nationally recognized as National American Indian Heritage Month, and the City of Plymouth would like to recognize how our history and culture of our na- great nation has been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous people. And whereas both law and proclamation recognized the American Indians as the first inhabitants of the lands that now constitute the United States, as well as making mention of their contributions to American society. And whereas in nineteen ninety, Congress passed Public Law one oh one dash three four three, which authorized and requested the president to issue a proclamation designating the month of November nineteen ninety as National American Indian Heritage Month. Congress chose the month of November to recognize the American Indians as this month concluded the traditional harvest season and was generally a time of Thanksgiving and celebration for the American Indians. And whereas Native Americans have influenced every aspect of the Americas development, as we celebrate their heritage, we extend our gratitude for their bravery and service in defending our nation for more than two hundred years. Whereas we recognize the Ione Band of Miwok Indians comprised of Northern Sierra Miwok and Nauset people for who for thousands of years have lived on the lands that make that today make up Amador County and the surrounding area. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Plymouth, California hereby proclaims the month of November as the American is the National American Indian Heritage Month. In witness hair of this proclamation is duly adopted on November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Gonna move to consent calendar items. Do we have any public comment on consent calendar items? Seeing none? Closing public comment. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bottomley.
I.
Councilmember Dell.
I.
Councilmember Hornish.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun.
Aye.
Mayor Cranford.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
At this time, we'll move to regular agenda items, seven point one, discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Belfour Property Restoration for restoration and inventory of contaminated city records. Um, we'll go to a staff report on this first, and then we'll open it for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, during a recent search for historical uh, water wastewater-related records and other records, staff located decades of city documents stored in a portable building located near the wastewater treatment plant. Upon inspection, it was determined that the structure had deteriorated over time, allowing water intrusion and rodent infestation. As a result, the majority of the stored records have been compromised by moisture, mold, and rodent damage. To assess the condition and determine possible recovery options, staff contacted Belfour uh, Property Restoration, a firm specializing in document restoration and contamination mitigation. Following an onsite evaluation, Belfour concluded that the most records are unlikely to be fully salvageable due to the extent of the damage. However, the company recommended cleaning, limited, limited decontamination, and inventorying of all materials to prevent additional deterioration and ensure safe handling. Um, but let it know, it should, even after the cleaning process, access to these materials will still require proper P P E such as in uh, N ninety five mask and gloves um, due to residual contamination concerns. Uh, Belfour did provide a um, quote uh, ranging between forty seven hundred and six thousand three hundred and fifty, uh, depending on the final scope of the work. And it's our recommendation that um, you guys discuss and possibly direct us to approve and execute services of Belfour Property Restoration in an amount not to exceed sixty three fifty.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment. Uh, I have one written in here. Stephanie, if you want to come up.
Stephanie Moreno. I wasn't coughing and sneezing till I got here, so I must be allergic to meetings. Um, so um, I applaud the city manager for taking this head on because I've been complaining about it for a couple of years, so I'm glad that it's finally getting taken care of. I do have some um, concerns if I could say them. Um, first of all, words matter, as your attorney will tell you, and it talks about critical documents um, will be saved, but that whether something's critical should be determined by the city, not the company. And that's not indicated how that's gonna happen in the agreement. Uh, for example, if there's some old ditch photos or records in there, those are essential for you to have cuz you're a FEMA grant. But uh, you know, a technician looking at them might not think that they're critical, so just determining how that that standard's gonna be met is very important, I think. There's also a thing in there saying that boxes will be disposed of that are molded or contaminated, and I think it should say empty boxes so that they're not just saying, looking at the outside of the box and saying, oh, it's moldy, so we can throw it away and just toss it, so those are two things. Um, I don't think the dollar amount's high enough. Um, I think that you're gonna find that the scope is gonna have to expand when they get in and look at things. And so, um, I I think you should authorize the city manager a little bit more money so that he can make an amendment if needed um, without waiting to come back to the city council because time matters on these kind of preservation things. Um, and then, um, uh, the only other thing is I'm hoping that they'll look for the map of the cemetery, which is, um, I asked Vicky about it. She hasn't seen it. It was here um, when Rex took over. Um, Nancy Lima assured me it was gonna be put in a safe place. Um, it's, it has more information on it than the recreated map, so I'm hoping you'll find that old map. If it's down there, I hope it gets saved. Um, or if you can find it here, that'd be nice, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this agenda item?
Rosemary Moreno Moody, Plymouth. Um, I just wanna know if they've checked to make sure there's not any documents being or files at like the city yard or behind city hall here or somewhere. If they've checked to make sure there are not, might be other potential issues with some of the storage. I don't know where they all store it, but I thought there were other places other than the sewer plant at one time.
Thank you.
I I can address that, that's all right.
Sure.
Um, we have looked elsewhere. We do have a a storage container behind city hall with documents in it. Um, the gentleman that came out to examine our our stuff or issues did go in there. Um, all those documents seem okay. They're not moldy or anything like that. Um, we've instructed our staff to start working on those, get them digitized as fast as possible. Um, so we don't have any issues, but the container's pretty, pretty solid and holding true. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment on seven point one? Seeing none online. We had none written in, correct? Okay, we'll close public comment at this time and move to uh, council conversation. Uh, Councilmember Bottomley, do you wanna, do you have any thoughts?
It needs to be done. It, you know, these are important city documents and great care needs to be in preserving them. I don't, I think hiring a company that knows what they're doing instead of trying to save some money and take it on ourselves, or, you know, have anybody um, do it. Yeah, I I'm looking at some of these pictures. I don't even know what to say, like some of them, it seems like it's a, it's a shame.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, I, I'm forgetting it taken care of.
Okay, Councilmember Dell.
I agree that we need to move forward on this as soon as possible, just to um, not lose any more documents. Um, I do like, uh, um, I think it was Stephanie that said, you know, that the cost will probably go up when they get in there and find what they're doing, so um, I would like to see a little bit of wiggle room um, to give Cameron some um, authority to make sure that we get the project done without delaying it.
Thank you. Mr. Holger. Got any comments?
Yeah, my first thought was, wow, that's cheap. Um, having lived through some sort of natural disaster in my own home, um, that number is gonna go up. So yeah, I would empower him, uh, Mr. Cameron Begby, to spend more than that, and I think we need to decide on a
Okay.
uh, crucial final number, if you will, a ceiling, not to go over without checking again. Um,
Do you wanna throw a number out? For funsies?
I mean, ten grand easily, fifteen even, I mean.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Alright.
Um, who's gonna do the handholding with those people?
That guy.
Cannon? Okay, cuz you know, to the earlier point, we gotta have somebody in there that's gets to decide what's what, what's important, what's not, because if there's something in there that's not really important, let's not pay for it to have it saved.
Uh-oh.
Andreas.
I think an initial pass is gonna be just seeing what is conceivably salvageable versus not.
Sure.
So I think that's why the dollar amount right now is rather low.
Okay, so they might come back with another dollar amount.
I I wouldn't be surprised if once we get into seeing if there's a huge amount of documents that can conceivably be salvaged.
Right.
That number's gonna grow substantially.
Yep.
But right now, as you see from the pictures, there's just
Yep.
a bad state of affairs in there.
Yes.
So I think that's why the number's relatively low right now for their initial
Assessment.
Sorting of what can actually even be saved versus not.
Right.
And if I may add, um, the gentleman was telling us about, Lodi had a similar issue. Um, and uh, Belfour is certified to handle city documents and confidential documents that we we handle every day. Um, but it's Lodi was up to fifty, sixty grand.
Right. Did they have much more as a, as far as the scope of work?
They had a lot more, and it required transportation in the hazmat type truck to, um, I think Utah, was it, where they process and try and salvage all these, and they have all the special equipment? I didn't think uh, that was necessary to um, until we knew what we were looking at. Um, we haven't gone through the documents only because of the hazmat concern. We moved, removed the documents from the trailer down the wastewater plant, and they are in a a dry area now. But um, this was their recommendation, at least just to go through, clean everything up, see what we have, re-inventory everything, and then re-box it into new banker boxes.
Was there any talk or mention of, and I don't know if this is necessary, but of an N D A with Belfour?
That conversation didn't come up, but I could definitely address that.
I'm just curious if there is something in there that, you know.
It may be in their contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can explore that.
Yeah.
We'd make sure that anything they handle would be handled in strict confidence, yes.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. So you say Lodi did, Belfour do Lodi's as well?
Yeah.
Are there any, but is there any other company that does this that?
So, so there is now. Um, believe it or not, it's pretty tough to Google. You know, so maybe that handles this kind of stuff. When you Google restoration, you get a lot of home stuff. Um, but I've talked to W G A who, uh, Larry White actually has worked with other companies similar to this, so I could definitely get more quotes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, are you good? Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Done.
Yeah, um, the documents are extremely important, and we definitely want to try and restore them, but best we can.
The documents are extremely important and we definitely want to try and restore them, but best we can. I don't want, I'd be leery to go too far above what they're asking for because. You know, you give people a leeway, they tend to spend it is the problem. Um. So I would say that uh, the city manager can always come back to us and uh. You know, maybe we could put it on the agenda. You know, as uh, if he needs to at the nearest next meeting and we could uh. Go from there. I I would think maybe up to seventy-five hundred if he thinks we needed to to do that. Um, you weigh in on that. But like I said, we could always come back and spend more. The other issue I would have is uh. I fantastic to have the, the public work superintendent there. I like that idea. Um, however, I wouldn't want the public work superintendent put in the position where he is deciding what documents. Get tossed out. Um, the public work superintendent is not an attorney and might not know what documents. Are valuable or not. Um, so I'd want no documents actually tossed or thrown out without uh, contacting. City manager who in turn contacted. Attorneys to decide if uh, this is something because obviously if these records were saved at one point, there was a reason they were saved. And so um, it, you know, I wouldn't, I I definitely want the public work superintendent on scene to be there. Um, when this is going on, I wouldn't want to be in the position of deciding. That I would want that to go to, to the city manager or city attorney.
I would think the only reason they would throw something out is if it was so contaminated that it couldn't be salvaged. Would be my assessment. I mean, right?
Yeah, the, the initial pass of destruction would just be, they'd be destroying things that they couldn't even recognize anymore for anything that.
They couldn't bring back from the dead, basically.
A-anything that's identifiable in any way, shape or form, we'd want to have them create a log.
They're gonna say.
To know.
Yeah.
What we're dealing with and then from that log, we could determine what we keep and what we can destroy.
Okay, um. So first, I just want to give credit where credit's due on this. Um. This has been an ongoing issue from what I've heard for years now. I'm not certain why um. Multiple people seeing these in the condition that they were in didn't, at the very minimum, cover them with plastic. I I don't understand why they just continued to be rained on and and destroyed in that building. Uh, so I want to give uh, so a bit of a shout out here to Cameron that. He went in there, first of all, that he even went in the building. And second, that when he saw the problem, immediately took action instead of just allowing it to continue to sit. So kudos to you, sir, for taking care of that. Um. And I'm inclined to a-agree with my council members that. Obviously, we need to preserve these documents, that that's a no-brainer. I would think anybody would agree with that. And um, I like the idea of of uh, raising. The amount just a little bit here so that we give some discretionary room for Cameron. Um, the ten thousand dollar mark, I don't mind, uh, seventy-five hundred. Not opposed to that necessarily either. That's not a whole lot over the sixty-three fifty they're asking for. Uh, keeping in mind that we're on an incredibly strict budget. Um, I trust Cameron that he would do everything he could to mitigate. That and make sure that, that we were spending as little money as possible. So that being said, I feel that we could. Probably do the ten grand in, in trusting Cameron that he is uh, pretty. Frugal and so he's not going to want to spend any more than we absolutely have to. So um, I, it sounds to me like the entire council is in favor of preserving. The documents. Uh, so to me, the only question then is the amount in which we give discretionary spending to. And and honestly, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the city manager has discretionary spending up to twenty grand. Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five grand. So he didn't, so, so another kudos to him. Is that he didn't even have to actually bring this to us. He could have just. Taken care of it. Um, so in. I- in that, I, I appreciate the transparency in letting us know about it and letting the, the community know about it. So technically, he's already got the go-ahead to, to spend up to twenty-five. Um, so if we want to put a limit under that, that's actually what we would be, what we would be voting on, I believe. With. Ten grand. Yeah, but he's our, he's our doorstop.
So just to be clear, the, the contract would still be for the initial amount they quoted and Cameron would just have room to, to negotiate past that. With a modified scope. We're not saying we would just give them the full amount right up front.
Alright, can I get a motion for, for um, action on this item? If, 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 if no one else, excuse me, if no one else has any other comments here on the council. Debbie, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to go forward with authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Belfort Property Restoration. For the restoration and inventory of contaminated city records. And to authorize him to go over the quote. Um, up to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Council member Bottomley?
Aye.
Council member Dell?
Aye.
Council member Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Aye.
Mayor Cranford?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, we're going to move to item seven point two. Discussion and possible action to approve TOT grant request for Challenge of the Champions Rodeo for up to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, so we'll go to a staff report first and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, throughout the years, the city has supported the Challenge of Champions Rodeo, which is a California High School Rodeo Association event. The event will take place at the Ameri County Fairgrounds, March twentieth through twenty-second through uh, twenty-twenty-six. The high school rodeo contestants are the top three qualifiers in their event from the nine districts in California. In the years of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, the city has granted fifteen thousand dollars each year to support the rodeo. The Challenge of Champions Rodeo is asking for a TOT grant of fifteen thousand for their twen- twenty-twenty-six event. Uh, the fiscal impact is fifteen thousand dollars from our transient occupancy tax fund. The Todd Streets and Promotions has appropriated only forty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five or twenty-five, twenty-six to promote all events throughout the city. The Challenge of Champions Rodeo has provided an estimated economic impact formula from the American Quarter Horse Association. From the organizers that is based on data from the Fort Worth, Texas Chamber of Commerce. Which does not necessarily apply equally to California or the city of Plymouth. The city receives approximately one cent for every dollar spent within our city limits out of the seven point seven five sales tax we have. As we do not have a special tax assess for the city at the moment. And the city has recently experienced significant decline in T, available TOT revenue collected. And the staff recommends the city council discuss this Todd Grant application and provide direction to staff regarding whether any and how much money should be awarded. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anyone that wants to make public comment on seven point two? I see Mister Williams coming up.
Craig Williams, the uh, volunteer chairman, producer of the Challenge of Champions High School Rodeo Plymouth. Um, I understand the situation, Cameron, and I had some meetings. And hopefully you could help us out in some form. Uh, in the past, we've successfully kept the rodeo in Plymouth. That's my concern. It's a statewide organization and therefore we have four meetings a year. And oftentimes folks want to move this event. And as long as we keep things kind of how it is, it gives me the power to keep it here. That's my concern and furthermore, I want to thank the city very much for all the, all the support because. It, it's made it a successful, safe rodeo to have your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Williams. John?
Yeah, I, we have some experience with this. It was when we were on the council way back. Um. Uh, ten, fifteen years ago, we did surveys because I had the same problem. But we found out back uh, uh, for many, many years. Uh, the, uh, Challenge of Championship was getting less than five percent of the TOT tax that was created. Um, through the city's funds. And um. And uh, o- only about thirty percent of what they generated in property tax, I mean, in, in TOT tax and. And sales tax. It's, it's going to be unclear, um, just what those numbers would be today if there was an audit done on them. But I still believe that the Challenge Championship is going to bring more. The sales tax and uh, TOT tax in to you than, than this fifteen thousand. The biggest, uh, I was, uh, attended meetings here. They had statewide meetings here uh, three years ago. And there was a big, big push to get this uh, uh, challenge in either Bishop. Or Red Block and they both pushed very hard and we were very lucky to be able to keep it up to this point. So it's on the verge of, 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 of the other powers trying to get this. It's, it's a great, great thing for the kids. Uh, my grandson was in it and I went on clear to Cal Poly and then to. To uh, finals in, in Las Vegas. It's character building for these kids. It's unbelievable. The, these, these kids. Um, and your four H and FFA kids are, are the future. Um, uh, officials of, of our communities. And I think it's very, very important that you support this the best you can and I think. Uh, if you research it, you find out that they're going to be bringing in more money and then this fifteen thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, I apologize. I saw, I, I just now looked down and saw that you uh, wrote in on seven point two.
Stephanie Moreno, um, just for the record, I don't care what order I go in. As long as I get to speak.
I try to do my papers first, so I don't forget.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying you're not going to hurt my feelings.
Okay.
Um, so I recognize that the event has been a longstanding tradition and in the past, there's. Actually been council members and that have had family members in the, the rodeo and. Um, but it's a lot of money considering that we have a limited amount in our TOT revenues right now. And we're not generating as much as we used to. Um, this event, even though I know there's um. Um, a, a summary in there from the Horse Association about how much revenue it generates, that's not. The kind of revenue that you would see here based on the situation we have at this time, maybe in the future when we get some more hotels in. But right now we don't. Um, I think it would be more beneficial for the city council to think about. Helping out directly the businesses that support our tourism. Um, and are benefited by our tourism in the way of some kind of mini-grants or um, other improvements. Um, you know, just things you could do around town that would help out like another charging station. There's only one in town and. That gets busy sometimes, people wanting it or, you know, paving the parking lot behind the pop-ups so people can use it when it's bad weather. There's other things you could do more directly that would benefit TOT. So I'm hoping that you will reduce this amount. Um, um, I think you've been giving out amounts of two thousand, twenty-five hundred to other people that are actually. You know, coming in and asking to do events for the city and I just um, would like you to consider a smaller amount this year. Um, given the financial situation that we're in and then maybe talk about using some of those monies to directly benefit. Um, I talked to a local business, not in, in Plymouth, but another one in the county that, you know, the tariffs have hurt them. Significantly because their supplies, they can't get in the US, you know, for their equipment and stuff. I don't know if anyone in town's like that, but. There are some impacts that maybe you could explore and talk about offsetting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for seven point two? I see I have a hand up online. I think it's Elizabeth Shaven Panotti.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Um, as someone who pays TOT taxes and um, uh, benefits from tourism. The Challenge of the Champion Rodeo always, always brings business to. Um, our Airbnbs, not that we have trouble filling them, but they, they bring a, a good clientele. Um, as more restaurants come downtown, they fill restaurants that, you know, they buy at Pokerville. I just think that. That this is um, the kind of activity that, that we want to support and that we want to, to bring into town. I, I'm. You know, if, if we're not generating as much revenue, you know, maybe not as much, but I just don't want to lose. I, I would like, I hate to see the city lose this event. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment for seven point two and move to council conversation. Mayor Cranford?
Yes. Um, Mister Williams submitted written public comment for this item to. Replace the one that was in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Um. Council member conversation. Uh, did I, I closed public comment, right? Threw me off my game, Miss Vicky. Doesn't take much. Um. Council member Bottomley? Do you wanna? Okay, okay. Miss Debbie?
Um, so I do have a question. Um, in the staff report, it says that we had appropriated forty thousand for streets and promotions. And I thought we had budgeted sixty thousand for streets and promotions and the forty thousand. Was for something else. Did I have that backwards?
I was going off the, the budget that we looked at and I might have misunderstood. I can go double check real quick if you like.
Okay, I, I mean, to me, the twenty thousand dollars makes a huge difference in when we're talking. How we want to spend the money because that would be, this fifteen thousand would be almost half of our, our annual allocation of what we wanted to spend.
I did speak with uh, Andy Heath, our finance director, um, as I was kind of mulling through on how to approach this. And um, he's the one that pointed the number out to me on the budget, so I'm pretty confident in it, but I could go double check.
Okay. Would you mind double checking while we continue to chat about it? Um. Holger?
Um. So for forty grand or whatever that number he comes back with for the, the rest of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, do we have any? Major events or TOT asks? Until twenty-six, twenty-seven would be my question too.
That's hard to determine because we don't know who's going to submit a grant.
Traditionally speaking.
Uh, traditionally speaking, we're going to have, what do we have coming in the spring? Some of my old time.
Four fires?
We've got, we've got four fires. They're going to ask for stuff.
That's five.
Uh, yeah, about five. They usually ask for around five. Um.
That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head.
Feel like we're missing something.
Anybody in the audience?
Miss Vicky, you would know. Just four fires.
Because then to me.
Makes it different.
Yeah.
Um. Is the, is that your comment for the moment?
Um, I also struggle with the formula of horses. Times days, times people.
Let me tell you the formula of horses. They're always expensive.
Yeah.
There is no cheap horse.
That's a known, known fact. Um. But I mean, I agree with what's already been mentioned that, you know, we have different struggles, uh, not having enough. Standard hotels and things people can stay at, so our TOT draw would be less than. Um, and I'm going to wait for Cameron to come back.
Okay. Do you have any comments before Cameron comes back? Are you okay?
No. So uh, it's good, so uh, going over the sales tax thing. Um. Think about that. Basically, for every hundred thousand dollars that gets spent in the city, the city's only receiving a thousand dollars back. And uh, I have a hard time believing, um, since we've lost our hotel, limited number of uh, spaces at the Forty-Niner. That uh, the city itself would actually even be bringing in that much getting spent for that time, might possibly so. But I mean, uh, even if. It was three hundred thousand dollars got spent over that weekend, um, on sales, the taxable items, you're only looking at three thousand dollars. So, I think we know the situation we're in as a city, most of us do, and. In years past, you know, it was great that we were able to do that, we were recovering that money we were putting out. And now we're not doing that so much, and. I think that, uh, you know, we need to run the city like you'd run a business, like you run your home. And, you know, if you can't afford something, you don't buy it, and. You know, we can't uh. Sit here and say, well, we're gonna give what we've given in the past, just cuz we don't want the rodeo going somewhere else. If they decide to move it, they decide to move it, that's unfortunate, and I don't want that. However, I don't think we should be buying stuff we can't afford.
Oh, I believe the budget is sixty thousand for promotion support.
You found it?
Yeah. Forty thousand was for the Mickey Park project out of that, uh, streets and promotions.
Canon, will you get Cameron and tell him we found it? Will you get Cameron and tell him we found the number?
Can, may I rebuttal to Mister?
No, yes, of course.
To Mister Dunn's uh, sentiment. I agree with, you know, if you can't afford it to buy it, but we're not necessarily buying the rodeo. Um. I think some of this T O T fund is earmarked to help others. And if that's putting on a great show that locals can go to, so be it. I would also hate to move it, but, I mean, I struggle. As well, because that's a lot of money out of our. T O T fund.
Yeah, so all, I'm gonna um, weigh in on this just cuz. I can. Um, first, I wanna say that Challenge of the Champions rodeo is near and dear to my heart. I don't know that you know this, Mr. Williams, but I grew up with your daughter. And so, uh, watched you and and your family work hard on this for many years. Um, I don't want it to go to Red Bluff, I know that's a big concern, is that it it could go to Red Bluff. Uh, as one of the options. We're really stuck in a conundrum because we've lost the T O T uh, money from the Shannon Doa, which was a significant, it was the second highest. Revenue of T O T in the city of Plymouth, uh, and that's gone. Um, essentially, the struggle I think the council has i- in general is that we no longer are seeing an influx. From T O T at all, if we got money from. T O T, it's being pulled from the general fund to be put in there. So, I I don't, in my opinion, I don't see how we can grant the fifteen thousand this year. In being fair across the board, we've reduced grant funding to other folks that have asked. Because we have a finite amount of funds now, it's not, it's not as if the funds are gonna be replenished, they're not gonna keep coming in. There will become a point where we can't give any T O T grants, so. Um. I I think we have to, I I want to give something, but I think we're gonna have to have a conversation about. What that looks like this year. Um. And it just, it it, it's tough and it and it really is troublesome for me. That being said, I also wanna offer that my daughter and I both have had conversations about working with. Challenge of the Champions in doing some sort of fundraising effort, and we would be very interested on a personal level in doing that. So, um, maybe that's something we can talk about, or I can reach out to Sarah and Bo about. Um. Did you have something, uh, you haven't said anything yet, Wendy? Yeah, I I just realized that you hadn't said anything yet, so I just wanna give you the opportunity. That that's, that's my two cents, is we just can't give the fifteen thousand, being fair across the board, to other entities. And trying to preserve some money, so if we do, if we are able to keep Challenge of the Champions here, we will have something to give again next year. I don't wanna deplete the fund to where we have nothing, you know, nothing to give in the future years.
Uh, yeah, I agree with what, exactly what you said. I, fifteen thousand dollars right now for the city is a lot of money, and if we're going to. Give fifteen thousand dollars out, I'd like to see it be for something that would benefit the city. I I think this Challenge of Champions is a great, is a great event, I knew somebody that was in it last year, I went to it. Um. But I just don't see the benefit that this, the city gets as far as funds. And do the city, the people of Plymouth, do they participate in it, do they go?
Yes, they do. Especially the youth. Um, we had, the, I mean, as you know, our our county in general is. The the bread and butter is Ag, and so there's a lot of Ag kids that attend that are not only. In the rodeo, uh, that participate in other ways in the rodeo, they may not be a contestant, but. Um, they help with and volunteer for and things like that. So there is a benefit for youth in that regard, and then. I would say it does benefit the city in that Kalina, you almost can't go eat at Kalina. When the Challenge of the Champions is here because it's full all the time. Um, and the Forty-Niner is usually full, so that's good, that's bringing some T O T. We're, we're losing money there too, uh, in T O T because we have so many permanent residents, but there's some happening there. Uh, Marlene and Glenn's is always packed during Challenge of the Champions. Um, and Taste is is actually frequented as well. Um, so we do have people eating and, you know, and then the gas stations and all of that's happening, right? Plus, it just, I think it brings a wholesome, awesome vibe to town. So. If we have the money, I would just say, let's do it, but, um. We just don't, we don't have that. I think we should do something, I think the conversation. Needs to be what amount.
Yes, I I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand would be a lot.
Yeah.
Right now.
I mean, uh, to just throw a number off the top of my head, I'm thinking somewhere between seventy-five hundred and ten. Um, but that might be a little high for for some of you guys, I don't know, that's just the immediate that comes to my mind. Um, with bearing in mind that four fires. Is gonna come in March, and then we probably won't have many asks again until the the next budget. I I don't think. I don't, do they ask? Did they ask for money last year? The Berry Festival, yes, you're right. They don't ask for very much, but yes, they, you're right.
But we don't know who else will show up.
Yeah, sure. Berry Festival? Wagon train, wagon train passed the but, the next fiscal year. Berry Festival's in June, early June. So they would ask before. Five, okay.
And do we decide that we have sixty thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
But we won't be giving any money into it, that's the important. Piece that we, well, there'll be none because the the sixty is from the streets and. My understanding when we did the budget. Was that the sixty K won't be replenished, it'll just continue to drain. Because there's nothing coming in to replace that.
The ask is greater than whatever is coming in, correct?
I don't have the, that exact amount for you, um, however, I mean, it's a dwindling account.
Yeah, I just know when we had the the budget meeting, I, because this was something I was confused about, so I asked Andy. That we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul, we're pulling from the general fund in order to cover. This particular account, is that your same understanding, Andreas, do you remember that?
My understanding was that if we continue to spend at the current level for many years to come, we would have to start taking from the general fund. The T O T fund gets split amongst the general fund and some other funds like the Streets and Promotions Fund. The T O T grant program comes out of that Streets and Promotions Fund, and so Andy's point, my understanding was. Was that we're not getting enough T O T to cover all of those things that historically the T O T was being split out into. So right now, there's not enough T O T coming in to keep replenishing the Streets and Promotions Fund the way it was in past years.
Correct.
Instead, it's just going to the bucket that was going into the general fund.
Correct.
So while there is still T O T coming in, it'll go into the general fund rather than the Streets and Promotions Fund to continue funding this. T O T grant program.
Correct, yes. You said it so much better than I did, it's almost like you're an attorney.
So it's just gonna keep dwindling.
It'll, yes.
We can't keep up at this pace.
No. So, thoughts?
Thoughts, Kevin's concerns, um, I mean, if we have been in our book, more than likely continue to. You know, deliberate with future asks, right? And so I think if we took fifteen thousand ask down to ten, um, that is a third. I don't think we should go half seize on them, um, that seems to be, I don't know, kind of a knee jerk reaction on our part, but. I think cutting it down by five grain already is, like I said, a third less. Um, if they can keep it here another year, two years or ongoing, that therefore that'd be great. Um, and if not, then we stand to lose that, but we cannot help the fact that our T O Ts are dwindling. So we should do what we can.
Debbie or Dawn?
I agree with what Holger was saying, um, I would support reducing it by the five thousand.
I still think, uh, ten thousand is way more than, uh, we should be spending on it, given the current situation. I'd be all in at five thousand dollars, it would be my max. To vote on this. Yeah, I'd love to be able to do the whole fifteen, it's just, that's not the situation we're in, and the money's not getting recovered. So, um, like you said, so I think we gotta look at, we don't know who else is gonna hit us for stuff. And, uh. Yeah, five thousand's gonna be my max.
I I would lean in at seventy-five hundred, I think that splits the difference between ten and five.
I think I would be more comfortable if we, if I, if I could see that we were getting. Monetary back, yes, it it does to some, I just, I just, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
We're also supporting local businesses with this, right, having this event here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're doing, they do really well the weekend of the rodeo. Um, yes. I, oh, can you lower your hand, I think actually she doesn't, I think that she already made her public comment and just didn't lower her hand. Oh, it was down and it came back up. Um, we are past public comment, Elizabeth, I don't know. Does she? She's not unmuting.
Oh, sorry, um, I just wanted to say that, that, thank you for letting me talk. Um, you're talking about T O T taxes without realizing that you have to support things. That generate the T O T taxes. Um, the rodeo does, um, four fires does not, four fires is self-contained, they eat there. Um. It, it, when you make decisions like this, it. Uh, it would probably behoove you to ask the people that still actually pay T O T taxes. What generates from them and for them, um, I know we give T O T taxes to, um, to. Uh, things like the Berry Festival, but that doesn't generate, that doesn't help you generate T O T taxes back, nobody that comes to the Berry Festival stays at. Any of the Airbnbs or the Forty-Niners. So, uh, when you talk about spending T O T taxes, I would like it as someone who. Just paid T O T taxes for this past quarter, um, if you would consider what's gonna help. Me make the money to pay into the T O T tax fund, if that makes sense, cuz your conversation was around. Keeping the money and having the money and what it would do for the citizens of Plymouth and what other things are coming up. But if the other things coming up don't help generate T O T taxes, it seems foolish. To fund them as opposed to something that does, that's just all I wanted to say, the funds are generated by tourism for tourism. And, um, uh, to, by tourism to help us continue to pay into it, if that makes sense.
Yep, thanks, that's a solid point.
Yeah.
So, um, that, that being said, that, that point. It does bring me to, I do know that, I I actually did talk with, um. Tracy at Rest and. Other than, other than the Forty-Niner, Rest is our, and Airbnb's, those are our only forms of T O T right now. Um, not all of our Airbnb's are paying T O T for, for some reason, I know the Panottis are, so I wanna make sure I say that. Um. So, uh. I I, I agree with the comment, you know, we need to have people coming here to use the facilities. To generate the T O T, so it's a fair, very fair point.
I understand her point, however, on this particular event. Yes, I think in years past, the majority of these people stay on the Fairgrounds property. For free and we don't get any tot funds off of that.
That is true, there's a lot of trailers at the, at the forty, uh, not the Forty-Niner, but the Fairgrounds.
There might be some of them paying to go into the Forty-Niner, but for the most part, the Forty-Niner is so full. Um, with long terms right now, um, construction workers and so forth, that you're only talking, you know, a portion of. You know, those spaces. Um, I think the vast majority of the people that are coming for the event, staying over the weekend, stay on that property, cuz it, I've looked back there, I've driven back there. And it's a lot of people staying back.
Yeah.
And the other, the other point to make to Miss Panotti's thing is I understand what she's saying, however, it's about the total amount of good it does. For all the businesses, um, as far as sales for everybody, so we're not looking at just, um. That we get a lot in tot off of this one, because we're not gonna make back fifteen thousand dollars in tot, we don't have. The infrastructure. Here available.
Yeah, sure.
For that, there's not enough room for people to rent, there's not enough spots in the RV park available for rent that you would be making back. Nearly be making ma- money back off of the tots.
Well, there's, there's current, I think there's currently about a hundred and. What, a hundred and eighty? Uh, spots available in the, in the Forty-Niner, and it's full, I will say that. Cuz I've gone over there, cuz we know people have come for Challenge of the Champions, so it is full during Challenge of the Champions. There are a lot of people that stay at the, at the Fairgrounds, I'll give you that, but I think there, even if. Even if we had fourteen hotels. You, we are gonna still have a lot of people staying because people who rodeo, a lot of them have the live-in horse trailers. With living quarters, so they, they do that intentionally because it costs them less money to. To try, you know, so you, you would still have that. Um. Yeah, I don't know, you guys?
I think that most of the events right now, we're only going about twenty-five hundred, and that's at five, we're doubling what we're giving anybody else. Um, on stuff.
Yeah, but this event is all weekend long. It's not one day, so that, that does make a difference, I mean, they roll in here midweek. And they're here till Sunday, Monday.
I understand that, yeah.
I don't know, anyone else got any input, comments, thoughts?
I think if we reduce it. I, I don't wanna reduce it too much and leave them struggling to be able to. To pay for the event, this is, I think, a small portion of, of how they fund it. But I do agree, you know, we should reduce it.
I'd like to know, are we the only ones who've come to in the county? Because the county also, uh, you know, get recent financial reward from it. These people are going to Jackson and other places. Have they approached support supervisors, anybody else?
I don't know.
They should ask Acorn Ridge if they could donate some money.
I, I, I agree a hundred percent. I think in, and I think in future years.
Uh, from their uh, income, Jackson Ranch RE's on here, we're on here.
I think, I think in future years, it would probably be doing that.
I mean, is there an amount that we can all think of and agree on, including Dawn? Or we'd like stalemate it, cause not saying anything is not gonna get us any.
Sure.
Anywhere.
So Dawn's firm at five. Yeah. Yep, Dawn's firm at five.
So.
If I know anything about Dawn, that's where he's sitting. I'll be honest, when I first saw this come up, this, for this grant, I was like, right around that same mark, five, five thousand. Um, only because there's a panic in my belly over finances.
Would you come up with seventy-five hundred to them?
I, I, I'm good at seventy-five hundred. Uh, I hate to cut it ha- in half, but I think there's some maybe other opportunities um, for fundraising or, and stuff like that, and I'd be willing to, to help out with that. Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to go to seventy-five hundred, I think. Yeah.
I would be in for seventy-five hundred as well, and, and for this year. And let's, let's hope maybe next year's better.
Right, so we're.
We're not all at loss.
You know, so I mean, the hope is that we're gonna get some, uh, we've got a hotel proposed to come here, right? That's keeps kinda circling around, so we're hoping that maybe comes to fruition up there near the brewery. The hope is this will continue, we, we're gonna make a change here and get on a better path.
I'd support seventy-five hundred.
What are you looking at? Dawn?
No, no, I know he's not gonna budge. I'm done. So I'll make a motion to uh, approve T O T grant request um, for the Challenger of Champions Rodeo for seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Councilmember Bottomley?
Aye.
Councilmember Dell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hornish?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nun?
No.
Mayor Cranford?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, um, I keep waiting for this to be fun. We'll go to item seven. We'll go to item seven point three, discussion on possible action to delegate authority. Yeah, sure. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and take a quick break. Uh, seven forty-two, give a five minutes, ten minutes? Five-minute break? You ready? Can we bring the meeting back to order, please? Seven forty-eight PM? We're gonna move to agenda item seven point three. Discussion on possible action to delegate authority to the interim city manager to execute contracts allowing septic disposal at the City of Plymouth wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we will go to a staff report on this item first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City of Plymouth operates a state permitted wastewater treatment plant that processes municipal wastewater. While many parts of the city's infrastructure are stressed, the city's wastewater treatment plant has excess processing capa- capacity available. Several septic haulers operating in and around the city have recently expressed interest in utilizing our wastewater treatment plant for the disposal of domestic septic collected from private septic systems in the county. Staff is proposing to accept and charge haulers on a per-load volumetric basis. Offering this service on this per-load volumetric basis maximi- maintains maximum flexibility for the city and allows the city to discontinue service for any reason at any time. If, for example, the capacity is needed to treat sewage from new service connections to the city sewer collection system. Allowing this activity would provide a service that supports proper wastewater management and environmental protection while generating additional revenue for the city. While several haulers have expressed interest, there is no predictable revenue stream that would be generated by this opportunity, though it would enable the city to generate revenue from existing capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. To ensure consistency and accountability across haulers, staff has developed a standardized contract template that outlines disposal procedures, fees, permitted waste types, and compliance requirements. Each hauler seeking to use this service would be required to sign an agreement with the city prior to the city accepting any septic from them at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the fiscal impact, the staff does not have any precise projections as to how much revenue this service will generate for the city. Offering this service will not incur additional costs to the city. As no additional staffing is required at this time, and existing plant personnel will manage intake and monitoring with, within current workloads and schedules. Our recommendation is to delegate authority to the interim city manager to execute contracts with licensed septic companies in a form substantially similar to the template agreement attached here too, allowing licensed septic companies to dispose of septic at the Plymouth wastewater treatment plant. And our wastewater treatment plant operator Brady um, has made himself available as well as our public works superintendent for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move to public comment and then we'll move to council conversation. Uh, Stephanie, we have you on the paper here.
Thank you, Stephanie Moreno. Um, I'd like to applaud the city manager for coming up with this innovative idea. Not posed to it, but I think the city council needs to be more thoughtful um, than what I've seen in the staff report. Um, there's some questions that need to be addressed. Um, one is that um, you have a permit. And it, it's important to make sure that you're coordinating any change in scope with regional water board. And if I can give you an analogy, um, you all are upset because the Forty Niner changed their uses without consulting the city. Be the similar if you were to change your uses of the sewer plant without consulting the permit authority. Um, it, it may be okay to do, but it makes sense to make sure that they're okay with it. Um, secondly, when the original permit, um, or this current permit, I think was issued in two thousand eleven, was issued, there was SEQA done on it. Um, hauling waste, outside waste into the system was not part of that environmental review. At the very least, I encourage you to do a notice of exemption for this project, so that you limit your exposure for potential litigation. Um, because there might be some um, with the increased truck traffic and increased exposure to the sewage. Um, and that, that's a very cheap, inexpensive form to file that the attorney could do in a matter of minutes. Uh, secondly, the fee is a fee. It needs to be established by the city council. It needs to be the same for every sewage pumping service, and you haven't established that in here. You haven't given any grounds for how you would figure that out. Um, so if uh, you can't make money on it, you can only offset your costs by state law. So you would have to figure out what your costs are gonna be and then establish the fee in order to do this. And the council should approve that fee as part of their uh, permit fee schedule. Um, any revenues that comes in needs to um, be incorporated into the rate study, because they're, they're water wastewater revenues and they need to be offset against expenditures before you determine the water rates that you're gonna be increasing for the people that live here. And if it's temporary, it might not be much, but it needs to be reflected in the record that that was considered for the Prop two eighteen hearing. Um, and when you say there's no additional cost, there are some costs that will have to be incurred, because you're gonna want staff to be monitoring, you're gonna have to have reports coming in. So there will be a, a small increase in costs um, that would be incorporated in that revenue. The other thing is it doesn't say where the sewage is gonna go into the system, and I initially assumed that they would be driving down to the sewer plant. Can I finish my question? Um, to sewer plant to dump, and that would create increased road, road traffic um, in town and on Old Sacramento Road. Um, but now I've been, um, I've learned that, that theoretically, they could just pop a manhole and dump it into the system. And I'm hoping that that's not what they're planning on doing, um, because then you have raw sewage that's flowing, you know, in, within the city limits um, into uh, into the system. So it doesn't say on here that you're, they're gonna be dumping at the sewer plant, so I'd like you to make a determination if that's where you want it to happen, so that it doesn't happen elsewhere within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on seven point three? Do you see how your nieces are always nice and let you go?
It's a, this is re- really scary to me. Um, you know, I've been on, on council many, many times and been at the sewer plant and it is so highly sophisticated, you can't believe it, with the computers and everything. And.
I'm going caller.
And I'm not that sophisticated to shut my phone off. Anyway, um, the filtering and all that, if you, if you don't uh, run it through the system, uh, it's, it, it, it's, it's scary. If something can go in there, it's, it's gonna cost you an awful lot more for repairs and what you're generating revenue, which scares me. And, and, and an example, somebody could just they don't know when they're picking this up, but what, what's going into it. Somebody throw um, a beer bottle in there and it goes through the system, it could raise havoc. They're going through there, so uh, we're, we're pretty well know what's going in there now through household uses. But i- i- as an example, this project up here with the service station, they just had uh, people come up there with um, basically uh, uh, pumping things. They cleaned the tanks out after they emptied them. And they could dump that in there as a system. And you don't know what kind of chemicals might be in that. So if you've got problems uh, getting outside chemicals that may um, uh, contaminate your grass, uh, and you know, you get uh, some kind of a roundup or something in there, kill a grass, or poison your goats, they're down there. And, and you're really gonna, you don't wanna jeopardize that, that, uh, at all, because we were paying thirty thousand dollars a year to have goats in there before we got this current agreement, where they're, they're, it's, they're riding the goats for free. We don't wanna jeopardize that in any way. So it's, it looks like to me, it's a lot of risk to take for little thing.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? Oh, yeah. Rosemarie?
Rosemarie Moreno Moody Plymouth. Um, I know part of this has already been brought up, but um, the location wasn't specified, so that threw a red flag up for me, cause it doesn't say they're gonna go to the sewage plant. So I would hope it doesn't um, affect the uh, quality of life or inconvenience any residents with them um, doing it through a manhole close to someone's house. Or the smell, or the, the school, or anything like that. So I, I would hope that they would take that into consideration if they're not gonna do it down there. Um, I also agree about the rate. Um, I also agree about the rate. I think that there should be a standard rate that all of them are charged rather than a contract between the city manager and each individual one where arbitrary amount is put in. So that the council should be deciding that rate. It shouldn't be left up to the city manager for each contract. And um also, um, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two, there was an overflow problem at the sewer. Um, during a storm, somebody um noticed it running out and it was reported. And I don't remember all the details, but I know it did happen. And so I would hope that we would take precautions on that because sometimes with the storm water and everything coming in, there's a possibility of overflow. Um, that's the only one I know has happened. I don't know if it's happened um since or or prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Robert Moody. Um, quick question. Is this tanks coming in that is pumping private parties' tanks? Septic tanks? Is that what this is?
I, that's my understanding.
If it is, you're dealing with solids, not raw loose sewage. You're dealing with muck solids that have been sitting there for ten to a year. So you're gonna have a water source to flush this down if it's dumped up here down further.
I don't think the intent was ever for it to be dumped in the town. It was always gonna be dumped at the plant.
Because I know our condition of our
Yeah.
stuff and and this is a heavy sludge. This isn't
Yeah, no, we 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 were never going to dump it in the in. I was gonna let him address all of these questions at the end. So um before we went to council conversation, it, do you have any others before I?
No, I just want everybody.
Okay.
It's like raw loose sewage.
Right.
Uh, this is, I've I've done septic and this is, this is muck. This is a heavy muck that's been sitting there
Mm-hmm.
for you for your year.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, so before we go, d- does anyone else have any other public comment? Okay, uh, online, written in? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and before we go to council conversation, I saw you were taking notes. Do you want to address any of the questions? Or or even for our benefit, for the council's benefit, if you could address some of those?
Issue. Uh, I got here.
Brady is uh definitely well burst.
Perfect. Let's do that. Hi, Brady. Nice to meet you. Um, this is the council.
Very good to meet you. So uh, there's a lot of things in place. So when we came on
Do you, do me, sorry to interrupt you. Yeah.
You
gotta get a little closer.
Making a full-time wastewater position first off. So uh, we got, I got here and Cameron tasked the team to think of ways to bring in revenue. Um, in two thousand nine Plymouth had a sewer plant upgrade that was pretty substantial. You have a nice headworks. You have plenty of capacity to take on flow. If you have casinos flow, you can handle that no problem. Um, you've got, we just spent, well, yeah, quite a bit of money doing a revamp because this headwork system really hadn't been worked on since two thousand nine. So we got new sensors, got new screens, the the about to get a, it's alre- it's already running like just perfect right now with all this weather. So um, we can handle the septic. Uh, wha- what we we would become is a municipal and septic treatment plant. Um, I'm confident about our ability to do that. And I say that not only just like with your infrastructure down there, but like with my skills as a treatment plant operator. I'm a grade three waste uh wastewater treatment plant operator and it's not just um like the cities. It, my cert's on the line, so I'm not gonna suggest to Cameron to do something that's gonna make my job more difficult uh or potentially hurt myself. You know what I mean? This is a, uh, as it is, um, these guys hold a private sewer plants. So this would be a win-win. They, I mean, they have top numbers. We have numbers. Cameras, Kennedy's got stuff he's sitting on. So, but uh, we can, we could do this and easily take care of everything. Uh, it's not really much traffic as far as uh loads. Um, the state, I report everything to the state. Stephanie, so they, yeah, I I keep them on board on everything that's going on. Um, really, uh, God, I had everything I should took now.
So let me ask a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Kind of that the the public had, and then you can just address this. So there would be nobody dumping or draining their sewage anywhere in the city, it would have to go to the sewer, the sewer plant.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Yes, a- and what we designed actually, uh, everybody that's seen it already is like, oh, my God. This is what every place should have. This is perfect. It's clean. It's just, if you want, I'm happy.
And then what about the? I appreciate your confidence.
Yeah, well, and not only that, but you have one of the largest storage ponds I've ever seen for a sewer plant. When it's full, it's not a pond, it's a reservoir. The it's, you've got more capacity. Plymouth has such potential, like not only just your wastewater, but your water, like there's such potential here, like big time.
I think you need to come to every meeting and
Well, my
just who rots here.
That's what I do. And so
Cool.
plot my scheme and I really
And and
this.
Okay, so and then what about the C Q questions and stuff like that?
We'll move, uh, our sampling, our reporting, I'm up on everything. Um, I I haven't seen any and we're exempt from title twenty-seven. I mean, we'll look through, but w- we'll make sure our bases are covered. But like, as I said, uh, it's
Your certification is on the line.
Yeah, I'm not gonna
Do something that
for my family, like
Right.
I'm trying to, this is something that could help Plymouth.
Right.
And our neighbors. These are local guys. Um, couple of them are small. There's one that's pretty big that could help.
Okay.
So.
Anyone have uh, any council members have any questions for Brady?
Oh, uh, and the, so the, the tanks, they're average about four thousand gallons. Um, it's mainly water. It's twenty percent solids uh which which is already digested. They've already done the job at their house. Uh, you've got the infrastructure to now move, store, and then have removed solids at a later date. It'll be a win-win.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, any council members have questions for Brady?
Yeah, I got a few. Um, first off, thank us for making the job. Let me thank you for taking the job.
Yeah.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
Understand from several people that that work for us that we're very fortunate to have got you.
Uh, thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Appreciate being here. Um, there's some questions have been posed to me by constituents here in town was um the G P D that the the system can operate right now is compared uh to what our maximum is, is compared to what we're we're using now and
We'd be looking at adding an extra seventy-five hundred gallons a day, which is a drop in the bucket.
So you're only talking like two truckloads basically.
Yeah, I don't even know that. It might not even be a truckload a day. You might not even get that, you know?
Okay, so and uh, because there are some concerns if, you know, these the the developments that uh we have slated to go in if if we end up having that happen, you know? We still have the capacity, so it sounds like we do.
Yeah, I I did that math. You've got plenty of room. Plymouth has great potential.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then um, are you setting an hour's operation on them to go in and out of the plant? And what would those, what would those be that would work for them? Because I imagine if if say they're coming from Pioneer or Buckhorn or somewhere and they do a job at two or three in the afternoon, they're gonna be getting over here a little bit later than you guys work.
Yeah, we'd have to work that out. I wouldn't want anybody in there without somebody being there. Um, during the summer months, one, one guy said they can run sometimes as late as seven o'clock at night. So this would be something we'd have to work out. Um, you know, Kanan or somebody, somebody in town.
Or possibly a camera system or
Well, that
but they have an access E or how would you?
Just because it's the, it's a sewer plant. Um, I would want somebody there.
Okay.
And um, it it's small enough to juggle and manage really, is with everybody. Hmm?
Um, anyone else have any questions?
Hi, Brady.
Hello.
Nice to meet you. Uh, how will this be metered or measured? I mean, how do you keep track of these things? I'm just curious how it works.
So it would feed into a custom manhole with a camlock fitting receiver, nothing spilled. And then it would dump, it would eject directly into the headworks, which now been revamped. Um, I'm about to have, everything's calibrated right now, but I'll we'll go by what they have loaded and then also I can double check with our flow meters. So I'm not gonna just do like, you know, the
Now just take their word for it.
But I'm gonna know every gallon that goes in.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I would also like to add that we should call out the fact that they're gonna be dumping at the uh sewage plant if that's not already.
Correct. They will be dumping at sewage.
Spelled out.
Else.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then
The the way it's specified in the contract right now is that they'll dump wherever city staff tells them to dump.
Okay.
They don't just get to pick.
And I'm also curious about this fee.
The fee, yeah. Uh, you can, if you want to have a seat, you can, Brady. Why don't I have to keep you up here?
Thank you. Thank you.
So the business side comes out of this and and doing our research, talking to septic companies that'd be interested, seeing what they pay now. Um, the going rate is six cents a gallon. That's where we are proposing to be um for everybody across the board. Um, right now where they're dumping, some are paying more, some are paying less. Um, but it'd be six cents a gallon across the board for us.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, um, I I I like the idea. I think it's a clever way to try to build revenue. You know, get things, money coming through through the city. Um, I'd like to see a plan. You know, there's, there's like a lot of bits and pieces and a lot of it I don't understand because I don't know anything about sewer treatment plants. But I would like to see, you know, wh- what are the parameters of the of the contracts, you know? How many people will you allow in? Is there gonna be a limit? How long will this go on? All those things and have that information to digest. I'd like to see that and your methodology for pricing, although you just said that you talked to the other septic places, seeing what they were paying. So I'd like to just like have it all in one spot that I could look at it and go, okay. All my questions are being answered on here. The, I understand this.
Will those come back to council before being signed or anything?
If if you'd like to review each contract before it's entered into, we could do that, that
No, I don't think, I think we can work on something that's, you know, linear and like for every company.
So the the contract template that's attached, that was the intention of being the standardized form. It's because they they sent out the amendment. You you have the original. There was an amendment that was sent, that was emailed out. Do you need the amendment? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we can share it because I know
I'm good.
Yeah.
In the interest of time, do we want to bring this back for December meeting? If if you guys aren't
How quickly are you trying to get this to market?
ASAP, because it's Cameron. Have you
Right.
Let me introduce you. So th- th- there were a number of questions raised, so if you'd like to have it come back and take time to digest the template, we can bring it back in December.
I mean, under uh line item eight, the insurance, are we increasing the insurance then? Do we need to in- increase insurance?
Why do you, what do you mean?
I mean, if there's more trucks coming in, more waste.
Then what you, then what he thinks?
Yeah.
Insurance amount that's specified in there is what each individual trucking company has to show that they have.
Thank you.
So so they'll be covered. So if they come onto the site and something happens, we don't have to have more coverage?
Correct. They have to
They have
that they have insurance for their business.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I had there were some questions about the um, the road to the impact, but we're only talking two trucks a day, right?
Maybe.
Maybe.
As Brady said, sometimes not even any truck.
And a four thousand gallons, standard three axle truck, four thousand gallons, we're talking less than sixty thousand, so. Um, about thirty thousand, okay.
If I may add, councilor none, uh, or vice mayor, excuse me, there's other options for them to go to. I mean, we're, we're gonna have to take a business mindset on this, that we provide the same price, but a better customer service and a better facility, which I think we have. But there are there are other options. So the, not every truckload that fills up in the county is coming to our plant. Um, but we're just offering the service.
Well, what would it take for you to get every truckload?
We're working on that too, sir.
All right.
How many do you have? Oh, sorry, Tom. Listen, are you done?
Okay, go ahead, Wendy.
How many possible customers do we have?
Um, without showing our hand, we we've spoken to um at least five that are verbally committed to using us.
Nice.
And uh, again, potentially, how soon do you, again, excuse me, that to want to start dumping?
Well, we could start as early as next week, sir.
Okay, with with that, I I I agree with the the business mindset and things with that. I'd uh prefer to I think city manager understands. He's heard the the concerns and I trust him to mitigate those things. I wouldn't want to put this all the way out to December. I trust the city manager and the treatment plant operator to work with our attorney also if they have to and mitigate anything. I don't think we, I don't think we should wait when we have people wanting to do business with us.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I agree.
All right, well, I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion. To, oh, excuse me, I don't have the thing in front of me. Go ahead. I would uh make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute, execute contracts allowing septic disposal at the City of Plymouth wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second the motion. Council member Bottomley?
Aye.
Council member Dell?
Aye.
Council member Hornish?
Aye.
Vice mayor Nun?
Aye.
Mayor Cranford?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed.
Uh, I want to applaud Cameron for this innovative idea.
Definitely.
I appreciate that, but I really gotta give that to the Brady and the public work staff. They they really took this on, so that's their, their, thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Right, good job.
Did I hear a field trip is in the future?
A field trip? I'm not going to the poop plant.
Why?
It's actually pretty interesting. I felt the same way.
Yeah.
We'll go.
I'll go.
It's one of the most fertilized places in Plymouth, that's for sure.
Does it smell? Okay.
It always smells. It does not do what we thought, right?
And so we'll let you know.
Okay, uh, let's move to uh city managers' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we uh, we had a phenomenal Veterans Day event this last week um on Tuesday. Uh, and I wish we would have gotten the word out a little bit more. We had a great turnout, but I've been involved with our Veterans Day events and as a rotor- rotarian and didn't realize that the city kind of put it on, so it was a a crash effort And didn't realize that the city kinda put it on, so it was a, a crash effort with the rot- rotary and the city and, and. Those guys Conrad and the, and that crew really. Did a phenomenal job. Um, we had some issues with, uh. We, with the pop-up, um, lease that we wanted to enter into, um, those issues came from environmental health. Uh, I've met with environmental health, um, as of late as today, and we've worked out our issues. Um, so hopefully we'll be moving forward with those, um, soon. Um, I reached out to Arrowhead Bakery, which is, was, was on deck and I'm just waiting to talk with them. Uh. Mayor Cranford brought by Angel Tree, um. What would you call him, ma'am?
You stole my thunder.
Oh, that's part of my report, I'm sorry. You should've had your report first.
It's not on here first, you want me to cover it?
Sure, please.
Okay.
Um, but we're also, uh, the sheriff's toy drive is getting ready to kick off. Um, that's put on by the Sheriff's Foundation, we will have a. Um, collection container here at City Hall as, as well as, um, Lava Dog down the street, um, for people to bring in their toys. Um, applications can be found through the sheriff's office or their school. Uh. With the recent shutdown, there was some, some fear, you know, um, with similar constituents on how they would provide for their families and, um. There's a food pantry right now, a temporary food pantry over by the bathrooms in McGee Park. And, uh. That was a com- complete, community-driven. Um, event by Ms. Elizabeth Chapepinotti and her husband, um. I was at the park, yeah, two days ago. And. Uh, somebody actually mentioned how great it was that the city did it, and it was, it was a point of pride to be able to put it on the community that actually did it. So that, that was absolutely phenomenal. Um, we have, uh. Former Mayor Akron and her husband that are also getting ready to do something, um, they bought a bunch of supplies that they're pa- planning on passing out or offering to the community for those in need. And then also the, probably the toughest one we have right now is that we, uh. We have to say goodbye to Miss Dana Knight. Um. She has taken a job with the City of Jackson. Um, she's been here since two thousand nineteen for six years and as much as she's a pain in the butt to me. Um, she is. Absolutely a phenomenal employee, a phenomenal friend to the staff and. Uh, we're gonna need to find somebody that's gonna keep me in line, that's for sure. Um, but she's gonna be missed and Jackson is very lucky to have her. And with that, um, we'd like to say thank you as a staff. Um, if we can.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, she, it's a. It's a tough loss, um. But. You know, she's setting us up and, uh, we've worked it out with the city manager of Jackson, um, that. Dana will be available to come help train her replacement, so. We're pretty encouraged that we'll be in good hands, so thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move to mayor and council member reports and future agenda items. We'll start with council member Bottomley.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Council member Dill?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Holder Hornish.
Why do you chuckle? It's just a weird name, that's all.
Weird to call you anything but Holder.
That's true. Um. Actually, I don't know if that's turned up, but.
Okay.
This comes from you, um. We have ongoing things, Zinfandel Ridge Swales, um, work, I think there's an RFP out there. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, so we're waiting for that to come back. Um, there was a food drive in, at the, uh, Zinfandel Ridge Park and you should be getting. Boatloads of food. From that, if it's not already here. And. I am concerned with, uh, the walking footpath, um. Uh, well, Caltrans said that they might and, or would install a baluster or whatever that pylon thing is called, so that no golf carts come through, um. Driving that. On forty-nine several times a day, um, in a week. I do see, thankfully, people taking advantage of the footpath, whether on foot or on, on a bicycle and. I still haven't seen that yet, I would love to see that, so there's no accidents, um. Hopefully it's not too. Expensive to dive into or explore, but I really think with that crossing there, fifty miles an hour coming from. The sixteen region into forty-nine is kind of ridiculous, um, I'm wondering. I mean, if it doesn't take traffic studies and this and that and the other, that we can maybe lower that to. I don't know, open to suggestions, thirty-five. Hit the forty mark earlier, I don't know, something. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nun?
Uh, another report, we're, uh, we're doing the agenda items.
Yes, both.
Okay, um. Excuse me, I forgot that, um. Couple of things, um, I'd like to see us put on the agenda. Um. Recently, there's been talk about the use of the flock cameras in the city. And, uh. I followed some of that, so I had asked about, uh. If the, uh, cameras were permitted and we were doing everything legal, um, city manager was able to, um, provide me with a. Permit that, um. For apparently the one on Shenandoah Road and as I. Um. Got reading through that permit. I realized that that permit, uh. It's not a use permit. This was a construction permit. For an installation and it was only for thirty days, um. So I have concern. About, um, like done, you know, a little bit of research about this and there's been places that have been sued. For, uh, significant amounts for not having, uh, policies followed. On these cameras. So I have a concern about that, I'd like for a future agenda item. I'd like us to look at, uh, the city attorney possibly look into. Policies re- regarding that, um. Issuing. You know, permits for these cameras or, you know, permission for these cameras. Um, the city to have a set policy of some sort that, uh, cuz apparently some of these, um, lawsuits that have come out of this have been pretty significant. Um. In that, uh. The placement any cameras is, uh. I'd like to only be, you know, the sheriff's office whoever picked those up, approved by the council, so I'd like us to have a, put that on the agenda. Fairly soon if these cameras are up, um. And I'm not opposing the cameras being up in any way, I'm, um. I'm wanting to make sure that there's a proper use permit and everything is done legal on it and to cover our own.
And I think we should also talk about it. For a future sense, right? As well to have something in place.
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, I, I'm talking about a city policy, yeah, um, regarding those, cuz. We actually apparently have two up, um. I was just, right now, just addressing the one here on Shenandoah Road and I know we, we do have one, um. Out at Zinfandel and I'm in no way.
There's two and, there's two in ZR coming and going and on the parkway.
Okay, and I understand they've done some good and like I said, I'm not opposed to the camera, I'm wanting to make sure that there's a policy. In place and I'm concerned who's, um, who's able to view this, cuz my understanding. Is like the one in ZR, um, people that are not law enforcement are. Able to view that and.
Yeah, so, um. I have an account set up with Flock. And I can log on and see. My license plates coming and going with a timestamp and it's literally. My license plate, there's, there's nothing else. Um. There's, there's no read of faces or. Any of that sort, but I can see the home plates coming and going.
Sorry to interrupt, but I don't think we wanna get into a discussion about this, we just wanna. If we wanna add it to the agenda, we can make that request. Um, cuz we can't really discuss it, cuz it's not on the agenda. So.
Yeah, I'd like to do that fairly soon, cuz like I said, one, um. As far as like regarding this one on Shenandoah, unless another permit exists somewhere I don't know about, um. Then it was never approved by the council or, or there's any type of permit or instructions for how it could be used, so I think we need to address it pretty quickly, um. So I'd like to maybe have something together by the next regular meeting.
Okay. Um. Anything else?
No.
N- nothing.
Okay. Um, I'll try to minimize mine, but I kinda do have a list, sorry about that. Uh, so for mayor report, first I'd like to thank supervisor Anneto for being here tonight, it's nice to see you here. Um. Uh. Some really cool stuff happened since the last meeting, so Veterans Park, I went by and visited. The morning that they were getting together to have all the kids come and plant, I went, I went by there around seven forty-five in the morning. And thanked those that were there to help and, and work and I just wanna give a shout out to Plymouth Elementary and the. City staff and the Rotary and everybody's that been working on Rotary, uh, the Veterans Park, it's amazing, um. And then I attended coffee with the city manager on ten thirty-one and we had one, uh, citizen show up. To, to chat with us and hang out and we brainstormed some really cool ideas and he had a lot of feedback for us and it was a great. Great coffee session, so I really encourage anybody who wants to have a casual conversation with the city manager and a council member. I think Holger's up next, is that this Friday? So it's tomorrow morning, um. To, to attend that, I think it's eight to nine thirty. Okay, and then, um, Cameron and I, same morning that I stopped by the Veterans Park, we made it to KBGC in the morning. To kinda talk about some of the stuff that was going on in Plymouth, that was pretty cool, um. So we have that, Angel Tree. So for those who aren't familiar with Angel Tree, this is something that Nexus Youth and Family Services does every year. And they put trees in the community with, uh, angels on them that have kiddo information written on them for kiddos. Underprivileged kids in, in Amador County and there's names and ages and toys and things they've requested for Christmas. I'm pleased to say that the city hall is gonna host one of those trees and I've delivered the angels tonight to the city manager. So once they get their Christmas tree up, uh, they'll hang those up and you can come in to city hall and pick up an angel. And then you buy the gift, don't wrap it and you can drop it off, uh, in Jackson at Nexus or here at the city hall, I'll come by and pick it up for you. Um, just as long as it's an unwrapped and whatever's on that list. Um, so that's a, that's a pretty cool thing that the city is participating in. Um, and then. Yeah, Veterans Day event was awesome, um, most of us attended that. Uh, oh, reminder, Robin Shaw, the comedian, will be here next Wednesday, supervisor Anneto, I'm counting on you. To show up in a cowboy hat. With your son. So, um, and that'll be at five o'clock, we're doing a special meeting, our hope is to have it kind of out front of city hall. Versus in here at the dais, but if it's too cold or the weather is too inclement, then we'll do it in here. Um, and we are gonna be giving a seat key to the city and. It's, it's part of a whole thing that we've just explained in the past council meeting, um. So we're excited about that, so that's November nineteenth at five PM, if you wanna. Come to city hall and support that endeavor, um, we're hoping for some great publicity. I listened to her podcast this morning, she talked about our town and she talked about the fact that she'll be staying here and, um. Some of the fun things that we have planned for her, so. We're hoping for good things out of that. Uh, okay. Accra. I had a meeting, I, I attended the board meeting for Accra yesterday, Accra is dissolving. In order for Accra to dissolve, uh, each city essentially needs to withdraw from Accra. However, we can't just withdraw from Accra, we have to. Come together as a council, vote that we are no longer going to participate in Accra. However, I will continue to be part of the board, if we just send a letter and withdraw, that removes me from the board and then I can't help. With dissolving, it's, it's a whole timing issue, right? So we need to have it added as an agenda item. To discuss. Not continuing with Accra and as far as I know, we have not even made our payment to Accra for the year. Um, based on their accounting, so that's something we might wanna double check. Um. So we need to have that, that needs to be on our December item because the supervisors meeting is December sixteenth and there's, they're depending. On us making decisions, each city bringing back decisions in order for them to make decisions, does that make sense? Okay. We can talk more about it later, um. So that's the scoop with Accra, so it's an agenda item plus a report. Uh, for future agenda items, um, I'd like to have the employee policy on hiring. Uh, timelines and nepotism, we haven't really, we kinda talked about that before. And we never really added it to an agenda item for a policy. You, you have something for me on that, Cameron?
Um, BBK is looking into that and revising and updating our policies right now. Uh, she just came back to me yesterday and asked for some more follow-up documents that we're working on putting together for.
So it's coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool, so scratch that, um. I want to add to. An agenda, uh, having some sort of workshop for the community or to- town hall regarding the casino. Uh, there's a lot of open-ended unanswered questions and so, um, I think. Since it's been twenty-plus years since we had a vote in the town and, and had a discussion on casino-related things. It's time to do that again, so I would like to, to do that. Um, and then I also. Would like to put a, uh. Agenda item on considering adding the ad hoc committee for the tribe back. Um, I think, you know, initially, my desire to remove that item. Or to remove the ad hoc committee was based on a lack of transparency, um, and. I am actually finding the opposite to be true, I think we need to have somebody on council actively participating in that and reporting back. So, um, you know, you win some, you lose some, you try things and. What works, works and what doesn't, doesn't. So. There's not public comment, John. December sixth, what?
The home tour.
Oh, the home tour, thank you. Jamie did come to the last meeting and talk about that, but, um, yes, December sixth is the holiday home tour for the. Uh, here in Plymouth Rotary is putting that on. Okay, I think I've exhausted my. Time for.
I have a question, well, huh?
Oh, yeah, and the Christmas market is the same day from eleven AM to four PM. I didn't realize that fell, fell on the same day.
You can make a whole Christmasy day out of it.
A whole Christmasy day.
That's, that's.
For the Christmas market and.
Do the home tour.
The holiday home tour.
Yep. That is December sixth, Saturday.
And you can get tickets for the holiday home tour online at. Is that Amador Holiday Home Tour? Does anyone know the website name? If you go to PFRotary.com, you can get the tickets there. Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to ask one, um, some time ago, we'd asked to have the old Sacramento Road. Issue put on the agenda and, um, this goes back quite a ways and then it was brought up again about when it would be on the agenda. Um, I'd like to know where that is, at this point, I would like to have the discussion fairly soon, especially in light of. Um, the vote we've taken tonight on, um. Activity at the treatment plant, um, and perhaps that. Night, uh, supervisor Anneto could be here for that too, because it. There seems to be. Some sort of conflict of whether we're, we're really responsible for the road or just up to the edge of the road and. Um, th- that needs to get addressed pretty soon, I get calls from people quite a bit about the condition of the road down there.
We're still actively looking at that, we had a staff meeting about that about a week ago.
Yeah, I know, in the, the past, we've waited because you were working on it. Yeah, I know. In the the past, we waited because you were working on it and uh yeah, if that's something we can move forward, it it gets asked about a lot and it's been quite a while. It's been dragging on, so.
Okay, anyone else? I think that wraps us up. Um. We are going to move to closed session. Before we do that, is anyone have public co- or have Stephanie used written down? She's got public comment for ten point one and ten point two. I'm just gonna condense those together. Is that okay with you, Stephanie? Of course, you would ask that. Trickery.
Stephanie Moreno, I'm sorry, I'm s- still coming. Um, I I just wanted to to say about something you just said, if I could, Mayor. Um, anything that's on the agenda, you have to allow public comments. So if John wants to comment on Mayor and council members' reports, he has the right to do that.
You're correct, yes.
Okay. Um, I mean, you could say he has to do it before everyone talks, but then it wouldn't make much.
It's a moot point. When in the past, when somebody has asked to do so, we have allowed that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so closed session. Um. I'm really concerned about ten point one, the way it's on the agenda. Um, I looked at this and I've been in use, you know, working with the Brown Act for many decades. And you cannot use this title unless you're using it to negotiate with your existing staff or your existing union. And Cameron has told me this is not about him. He has not asked for a raise, cuz that's what I posted. This means that he's looking for additional compensation. So I think number one, you can't talk about the recruitment if that's what you're planning on doing under this item. And the city attorney should know that. I think it's unfair to Cameron to put it on here to make it look like he has asked for compensation. It's unfair. And I edited my post to clarify that, but I just wanna point that out. This is only to allow you to negotiate with the existing city manager, which is Cameron. Um, secondly, on the conference with legal counsel, you guys have had litigation, potential litigation claims on the agenda almost every meeting since you came on.
Oh, we know.
Right. There's been no reports out. So is all the pa- all the pending litigation still pending? Or ha- are you guys not reporting out the results of the ones that have been settled? Cuz you're required as soon as it's done to report that out to the public and that's not happening. So I just wanted to m- make that point as well.
Yep, we know. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment on ten point one or ten point two? And I didn't mean that, oh, we know, snarky Stephanie, just so you know. It's for I'm depending on it.
Okay, Rosemary Moreno Moody.
What is? I know.
Okay, my concern was with ten point one. I mean, she just said some stuff that I didn't realize. But I still just wanna make a a point that I was curious what it was. I was hoping that they weren't negotiating um salary and benefits for the interim city manager, given he's been here less than three months. And also being that we haven't had a financial update um in a while. So that was my concern with that. Thank you.
The uh compensation um for the interim position was uh set. And it's for as long as the interim position is. So there's no negotiating that until a person's hired fully. We won't be changing uh compensation. Yeah, I wa- I I was told night and as I read it, I could see where people got that impression. Um. So I just wanna make that clarification.
Okay. Okay, um let's, I I don't even know what it's about, so I can't speak to anything. So um we're gonna go into closed session and uh we'll report out after that. And that's it. Eight forty-three PM. Thank you, guys.
Is it still muted? Uh-oh. Okay. Are are we muted though? No, we're good. Okay. Um reporting out from closed session at nine thirty eight. A claim by Curtis Cantwell against the city of Plymouth has been settled for ten thousand dollars. Uh no other reportable action taken. This meeting is adjourned at nine thirty eight P M.